Nineteenth continuation of the public meeting that we opened at 5:00 PM of the Needham Select Board. I am Mo Handel, Select Board Chair. First, we'll confirm that all members are present and able to hear me at this session. Matt Borelli?
Yes.
Marian Cooley?
Yes.
John Bullion?
Yes.
Dan Matthews, thank you.
Yep. Yes.
This open meeting of the Needham Select Board is being conducted remotely consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. Public access does not ensure that the public participation unless required by law. This particular meeting will have public comment during several of the agenda items on our agenda. All the supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website, www needhamma.gov unless otherwise noted. Before we move to the agenda, may I have a motion to continue this meeting to the next scheduled meeting of this board on March 23rd at 6:00 PM in the event of a technical failure of our meeting medium?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? We come to the vote. Matt Borelli?
Yes.
Marian Cooley?
Yes.
Kate Fitzpatrick? Dan Matthews?
Yes.
John Bullion?
Yes.
The ravages of looking at a screen. The chair votes yes. That brings us to the first item on our agenda, which is a certificate. Actually, two certificates of appreciation. I will read the first certificate and Matt Borelli will read the second certificate. The first certificate is awarded to Garrett Graham of the Needham Garden Center in recognition of the 20 years of your ownership serving the residents of Needham from plants and gardening tools in your store to the repair of lawn mowers and snow blowers in times of need and for your willingness to step up during the current COVID-19 crisis. You enhance the town and our citizens' lives. We wish you many more years of success in Needham. Congratulations. Sign the Needham Select Board. And every member of the board has signed the certificate. Does anybody want to say a word or two about Garrett Graham? I think we've all been customers of the store at one time or another.
Sure, Mr. Chairman, I'll start.
Go ahead, Matt.
Not only Gary's also a friend, so I'm somewhat biased, but he took that store over, I remember. It was 20 years ago and he purchased it and it wasn't doing much, you know, as much business as he thought it could do and he really has grown that store into something that Needham can be proud of and repairs and gardening and especially during COVID-19, he was busier than ever with people do-it-yourself projects coming in and maintaining their lawn and he kept open and he was able to service people outside, not coming in the store, just kept everything moving. So good tribute to him and 20 years of taking over that store and really growing it is a tribute. So I'm proud to make that motion.
Thank you, Matt. This is in the form of a motion, so is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Marian Cooley?
Aye.
Matt Borelli?
Aye.
John Bullion?
Yes.
Dan Matthews?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The ayes have it. That brings us to a second certificate of appreciation again for another longtime Needham business.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Certificate of appreciation awarded to John Timmerman, J.C. Timmerman, Inc. In recognition of over 33 years serving the residents of Needham. Your commitment to service, your generosity and donate your time and labor for numerous volunteer organizations and your ability to continue your hard work during the current COVID-19 crisis has enhanced the town and our citizens' lives. We wish you many more years of continued success in Needham. Congratulations. Sign this ninth day of March 2021 with all members signing. And I say it in form of a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Discussion on the motion? I'll just say that I've known John for many years also as a member of the Needham Exchange Club and I've been a member of many of the volunteer organizations in Needham where he has stepped in and made a real difference. So this is a great recognition of his contribution to the town.
Chairman, I will say and piggyback on that, you know, that the amount of donations he's made to numerous organizations around town so that they could use dumpsters free of charge and increase their bottom line on activities that they've had for fundraisers has been incredible and always a phone call away. So congratulations.
Marian?
Well, and I would, I would just observe that I think there's many tales from around town of people who he's rescued in some way or the other with being able to help. So.
Thank you. Anyone else? Then that brings us to the vote. Marian?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
John?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The ayes have it. This brings us to a public hearing for underground afflammable storage at 40 Windsor Avenue. Kate, is there anybody here for this matter?
Sandy will bring it up.
Yes. Michael St. Pierre is here and he's joining you now.
And the fire chief is here.
Yes, that's correct.
Now, this is a public hearing, so if there are members of the public who, after this is presented, wish to be heard on the matter, they should figuratively raise their hands. May I have a means of doing that from the participants?
Yes.
Thank you. Who was going to present on this? Anyone here from the?
Mr. St. Pierre.
I can take the lead. Hi.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we're just trying to get approval for a thousand gallon underground propane tank, the size of the house and the appliances along with the generator and pool heater. We kind of need that extra storage, so we're not making frequent deliveries. I know Needham just requires 500 gallons, but we would hope to get the approval for the thousand gallon.
Mr. St. Pierre, is this for 40 Windsor Avenue?
Correct.
Okay. And town manager, is everything in order on this application?
I defer to Sandy Secoda, Mr. Chairman.
Sandy? We have everything?
Yes, yes, yes.
Chief Condon, do you want to weigh in on this at all? You've reviewed this.
No, we've, the fire department's reviewed the application and we're okay with the plan.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone here from the public who has an interest in this matter who wants to be heard before we call on the board?
We do have someone, Mr. Chair. Can I allow her to speak?
Please.
Okay, Ms. Langston. Langston.
Hi, thank you. I'm an abutter to this property, which is on Windsor Road, not Windsor Avenue, actually. And I just would like to know what mitigations are put in place to make sure that the tank is safe for the abutters, that it won't leak?
Thank you. Who wants to take that question?
I can answer what the safety protocols are and what we got to do by code. Tanks are made out of steel. There is propane odorant put in it to the tanks. Any leaks, kind of smells like rotten eggs. We have to be 10 feet off of the property line, 10 feet off of a buildable structure. The tank has to be set on a concrete pad and strapped down. It also has to have cathodic protection, which are two anode bags and everything has to be filled in with clean sand. All has to be done by code and approved by the fire department.
Thank you, Mr. St. Pierre. Do you have anything to add to that, Chief?
Just that prior to it being filled in, the fire department will inspect the tank and the plumbing inspector inspects the fittings.
And if I may ask, this is not an unusual situation. Is that not correct?
No, there's a number of these around town.
Okay. Ms. Cooley?
We had developed like a frequently asked question sheet related to these tanks. Did that happen or not happen? Just?
I think it's in draft, so we could, we could start moving that one again. There haven't been any in a while.
In a while. So it would be great if we do develop that, if we could actually send it with the notice to the abutters, so they could have those questions in advance or those answers in advance. Yep.
Does that answer your question, Ms. Langston?
Yes, thank you, but I have an additional question.
Of course.
Which is on the plot plan that accompanied the notice for this hearing, I can't actually see where the proposed location of the propane tank is.
Is there?
Can someone point that out?
Is there any way to show that on the screen so that we can demonstrate for the citizen where the tank is?
I don't have that, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Is there anyone who can describe on the plot plan where it is so that she may? Do you have a plot plan in front of you?
Yes.
Okay, so can Mr. St. Pierre describe where the tank is with respect to the drawing in a way that would help the abutter understand where the tank is going to be?
Yeah, so the builders haven't actually decided on a location. It's kind of depending approval of what size of the tank. Obviously, the 500 gallons is a little smaller, so it would kind of fit in different places as opposed to the thousand gallon tank. All I can say is it'll have to be 10 feet off of the property line, 10 feet off of a structure and 10 feet away from a source of ignition. So that would be something that gets decided after this meeting that we can put on a plan and send to all the abutters if it, if it helps.
Do we normally do it this way? Normally, we show the location of the tank, do we not?
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
So I would propose unless it's going to cause a significant problem for everyone, including the town, the abutters and the owner, that we defer the decision on this matter until the abutters can see where the tank is going to be? Mr. Matthews?
Well, and just to kind of to address that a little bit, I think that it might be that we can approve the app, the application in terms of the size of the tank and so on, except that reserving the fact that they've got to come back here and get approval of the location. Does that make sense or do we?
It makes sense to me, but I'd like to hear from other members of the board. Matt?
Mr. Chairman, I agree. I think that if they came back, you would highlight where a 500 gallon tank would go on the property and then over a thousand gallon tank would go on the property if we choose not to go with a thousand dollar, thousand gallon tank. I just think that's notice to the abutters and that's what the application calls for, unfortunately.
Okay, and then who did I call in next? John and then Marian?
I think that we, they have to come back anyway. I would, I would like to see this located on a plot plan and at that time we'll know whether it's a 500 or 1,000 gallon tank. Let's, let's bring this back. Let's give them an opportunity to show the abutters where this is going. So that, I mean, we normally have this. We don't have it. I don't think it's complete. I don't think it's ready for primetime, in my opinion.
Okay, Marian, do you want to weigh in on that?
Yeah, so the only thing I would say is I know of no reason why we're opposed to a thousand gallon tank. So provided that Mr. St. Pierre can locate the thousand gallon tank in accordance with the regulations, I don't think this board has any issue with that. It's not like he has to draw two locations, but we need to know that there's a location that meets the requirements.
Yes, I see no reason why we can't vote this when we have a complete picture. If we have it at our next meeting, which is March 23rd, can we do that given our agenda for that meeting? Then that shouldn't delay this more than a week or two. John?
I would move that the board vote to defer, well, to continue the public hearing on this issue until March 23rd and also to make the correction to 40 Windsor Road on the agenda fact sheet.
Marian?
I was just going to note that I do believe there's another abutter who might has a question and we might want to wait to do a motion.
We will defer the vote on the motion if there is another abutter who has a question.
It's Kristy Thompson and she is coming to ask her question now.
Welcome. Hi.
Thank you. I just wanted to add that I was here and that I'm in agreement with what Karen is saying and I think another question is with the placement of the tank as far as there's an additional pool and other, you know, in-ground dwellings and the water runoff to other abutting properties. So just another concern with the placement of the tank and just how that would affect those water runoff issues.
So we'll take note of that and we'll advise Mr. St. Pierre to also indicate when he's locating the tank to inform the abutters and this board about the questions raised by Ms. Thompson.
Is that acceptable? All right, so then we have the motion. Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, I just, I just have one more, one question, which is it's my recollection. We've talked about the fact that, I mean, we didn't, this is a relatively recent kind of installation, I mean, in terms of historical terms. That's why the law requires them to come before us, but we've been doing these for a number of years. I'm familiar with five, having done 500s. My recollection is that a thousand is a standard size and I guess I'm directing that question to the chief, that we've approved those subject to the same kind of schedule of rules and restrictions. Am I correct about that?
Yeah, that's my recollection. I think we've done a number of the thousands and those have to be licensed by the board. Whereas I believe the others have to be permitted by us. So we permit and license. We permit, but you license.
Then we really need to know this. There's no reason to, in other, just to kind of make sure that everyone understands. There's no reason to suppose that the board wouldn't approve this in the ordinary course, but there has to be a location. The neighbors have to know where that that is. And not to be too picky, I just wanted to ask that if we do, when we have testimony at these public hearings, if people would state their address, that would be helpful to me. Now, I know that the both, we know the names of the people because they appeared on the screen and they are abutters, so that's good enough for me, but I would be happier if people would state their addresses for the record.
Now, if you will be kind enough to second the motion, we could vote on it.
Yes, I will.
Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded to continue this matter to the Select Board meeting of March 23rd. And that, at that meeting, we will have a site plan where the tank is shown and the questions raised by the other abutter would also be addressed. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Matt Borelli?
Yes.
Marian Cooley?
Yes.
Dan Matthews?
Yes.
John Bullion?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you. Thank you very much for coming and we'll see you all on March 23rd. That brings us.
Yes, Mr. Chair, the next application is also for Caravan Lane, Mike St. Pierre. And I want to tell you that the same situation occurs with this application as well. There is no site on the application.
So are there abutters here from that application as well? Because if there are, we'll open the hearing and let them express any questions they might have and then we'll see if there's a, we can postpone the, continue the hearing till the 23rd.
The address is 16 Patrini Circle.
So are there any abutters here for that matter? If there aren't, the chair would solicit a motion to continue the hearing pending showing where the tank will be on the site plan.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? That brings us to the vote. Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
Ms. Cooley?
Yes.
Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. That's unanimous. Thank you. Dennis Condon, Fire Chief. Our next matter is the Metro Fire Mutual Aid Agreement. So the floor is yours, sir.
Yes, Mr. Chair. It's been quite a while since we've last signed the mutual aid agreement and a lot of people have changed over the years. And it's time that we do that again. The Metro Fire District is comprised of, I believe, 35 cities and towns within the 128th belt. And the concept of the mutual aid agreement allows fire personnel to cross over city lines and to help in other communities and this goes beyond just that district as well. We do this on a regular basis. We help each other. It would be too much for certain situations for one town to plan for any eventuality that may come their way. But much like what happened in the Merrimack Valley a little over a year ago, the city of Lawrence was overwhelmed by a gas explosion. And so fire departments from throughout Massachusetts and even New England responded to that. And this all comes about during mutual aid. This past Sunday, we were over in Dedham, helping them out. They had a fire at a CVS and so this is used quite often and quite effectively and it's a great benefit for the towns that are involved in it. And I would urge the board to make a motion and to adopt the mutual aid agreement and have the town manager sign it.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments before we solicit a motion? Marian?
I was just going to note for the chief that he's having pandemic, pandemic fine brain, but that the Lawrence gas explosion was in 2018, believe it or not.
Okay, so.
It's been a long time since.
It's been a long time. It's been a long time.
But, but it's a good one to forget if we can, even though we want to remember all the lessons learned.
The timing on this after the last discussion is a little scary, but.
Sometimes I think I forgot to study for my math test in period B up at Needham High School, so I get dates mixed up every once in a while.
All these things go into time warps, Dennis.
That's right.
No apologies needed.
It's for sure.
Any other comments before we have the motion? It's a very lengthy motion. Who, who would care to make it or do we want to just refer to it in the materials?
I'll, I'll make the motion to refer to it in the agenda fact sheet and it is a lengthy motion and as long as everybody is okay with that, the motion is considered made.
So Mr. Bullion votes to move the motion consistent with the material provided to the public in the agenda packet. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Marian Cooley?
Aye.
Matt Borelli?
Aye.
John Bullion?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The ayes have it. Thank you. It's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you very much, Dennis.
Good night, all.
Mr. Bullion wants to make a motion with respect to?
The appointments and the consent.
Before we, the motion on the appointments, I'd like to note that on the appointment calendar is Catherine P. Jakes as being proposed to the Board of Registars. It's a longstanding and very well-respected Needham family and we're very pleased that she's pitching in, especially around the time when we're having an election and which is a lot of work for the town clerk and she needs these registrars. So with that having been said, that brings us to the motion. Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
All right, seconded and yes by Mr. Matthews.
Yes.
Marian Cooley?
Yes.
Matt Borelli?
Yes.
John Bullion?
Aye.
And the chair votes yes. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. That brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is a consultation with the Community Preservation Committee. And I will note that the Chair, Peter Pingator, and Kara Slustig, Interim Director of Public Works and CPC Liaison are here to go over the items that they are considering. So this is a consultation and welcome. Peter, are you there?
I'm here. I was trying, I was trying to up my game on technology, so I've got a split screen here.
Oh, wow. Are you, are you looking to share your screen?
No, I actually have my presentation on my laptop and I have the, I have our Zoom panel on the big screen and I first attempted this, so we'll see how I do. Okay.
We'll be very patient with you.
I shouldn't be, sorry. All right, so this is the Community Preservation Committee consultation with the Select Board concerning the CPC applications that are currently under review by us. You should have received a memorandum from me as chair, which addresses the 10, nine, our applications and the 10th matter being this CPC financing issue concerning the community housing bucket and increasing our reserve fund amount to that bucket. So there are 10 bullet points in total in that memorandum. I, I trust that you've received it. I don't know that you've had an opportunity to review it, but for the benefit of the viewing public, I'll just quickly go through it. I think the easiest way to deal with it is and probably three quarters of these items, we all agree are, are we all support the relatively small amounts. They fit neatly within the CPC. They have a lot of community support. And then there are three or four that may require some, or you may be interested in some discussion. So with that, I think what I would propose is that we can, I'll take questions or comments after each one of the individual applications, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chair.
Fine, the floor is yours.
Okay, so the first item is FY 2201 and that's the Emory Grover renovation and addition project. This application is for the design funds. The application request is for $1,475,000, which is the full amount of the design cost of the proposed renovation in addition to the Emory Grover building. If this is funded, the, we anticipate that the Needham Public Schools will be back before CPC for FY 23 funding for construction. And according to their calculations, CPC would be eligible for funding or they would request some amount slightly north of $11 million for construction funding. And what that represents between the two applications is approximately 50% of the total cost of the renovation and addition project. So based on those applications, we took some time to review some financial models and we had some pretty in-depth discussions, if you will, concerning the, what we plan on doing or what we can do if we funded this full amount. And we walked out of that discussion with some concern that funding the project at this amount would restrict our flexibility as, as a committee, as a committee for some number of years going forward. And we developed a sense of the committee based on that. Now, remember, we're in the middle of the process now, so we're still doing our due diligence. We have our public hearing. We have our consultations with the Select Board and our consultations with the Finance Committee. We haven't voted, but the sense of the committee is that we would fund 25% of the total amount of this cost, which is basically half of what they're asking, what they would, would be asking for, what they say is subject to CPC funding. And that's, and round numbers at $6 million. And what that means for this particular application is the sense of the committee and the instruction that I came out of that meeting with was that we would fund $375,000 of this requested amount, because the request for the design funds is for the full amount. And then the balance of the 6 million, which would be roughly 5.625 million, would be for construction. So that's the, again, sense of the committee. And I guess I would entertain questions if, if that's how you want to deal with it. Or comments.
I think it's good to do it item by item rather than try to wait till the end. So are there any questions or comments with respect to this item?
Chair?
Matt?
And not speaking for the schools, I just know that this building is their number one priority. So I haven't looked at where it would be financially for you and maybe you can just shed a little light if you did fund the full amount, how tight you would be and what that would restrict the committee from doing. I just know that in our discussion. restrict the committee from doing. I just know that in our discussions, in our discussions with the schools, this is what they're trying to highlight to move forward, and I would just hate to handicap them at this time from doing so. But I have not, we have not had, there's plenty more, like you said, Peter, plenty more steps in this in a public hearing and but I'd just like to hear some of the discussions, how tight it would be if if that full amount were granted.
So what we were, you're, I I'm gonna do this just uh without the spreadsheets in front of me, but what we were looking at is a roughly four-year period beginning in two twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, where um after we pay uh pay off our bond requirements to, based on the pond, excuse me, the pool, uh, the um, our our town hall and the anticipated bond uh requirements for um Emory Grover, that what we will be left with is the match, if you will. It would basically eat up substantially all, but not all of the two percent surcharge. And what we, eh, what we'll be left with is the match from the state. And of course, we have funding requirements, so we would be, we still would have to put our ten percent in each of the restricted funds. So um, that is not yet. So I would say that we're, if, for those, that three or four-year period. If Dave Davidson wants to o- offer any additional insight into that, I'll allow him. If that's sufficient in your mind, um, it's up to you. Matt?
Okay. Davey, you you're recognized.
Uh, Mr. Chair, the uh committee will be getting an updated uh financial outlook for the CPA fund uh just prior to their public hearing, which is scheduled for March seventeenth. You know, which will uh has several assumptions built into it to allow the committee to speak more clearly to the tightness, which uh the Chair uh correctly indicates that we're looking at a few tight years, but that um it's anticipated that uh the amount that the committee has has indicated has indicated that uh they're receptive to funding uh is workable within the surcharge revenue. But uh, as I said, Mr. Chair, you'll have a clearer picture um certainly by the time the Select Board meets again at the end of the month, and the CPC will have a clearer picture on the seventeen.
Very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments before uh Mr. Pingator uh continues? Go ahead, Peter.
Okay, um. Next up is F Y twenty-two oh two, and that's for preservation of town of Needham marriage records. The requested amount is twenty-five thousand dollars. The request is for um license, uh, software licensing and related consulting services to scan and upload and preserve marriage records from nineteen nineteen forward. Um, just for your information, for the records prior to nineteen nineteen have already been preserved and are accessible by C D. So as a result of this application, um, and the work in connection with it, we would have all of our marriage records accessible um uh by digitally accessible. This, there would be two formats. One would be C D for the records prior to nineteen nineteen. After that, it would be strictly, we would be able to uh obtain them online. Um, since that the committees were in favor of funding uh the application.
Thank you.
Questions?
Any questions or comments? Uh, Mary Ann Cooley?
Um, I'm just curious, Peter. So is there any discussion about taking the ones that are on C D and actually moving them as well?
So I raised that question. Um, and we we did have a discussion about that. Uh, this request does not fund that. I think that it could potentially do that in the future, but what satisfied me, for what it's worth, is that um although you would have to use two different systems to access the data, they're both are digitally accessible. Um, so uh, but but I, you you're right, it's two different systems. And I did raise that question. It would be an additional request. It would probably be an additional sum of money that we have not explored uh as to whether or not we could do it.
I I just, um, as I think about managing data, right? Um, C D is is really not that stable, a long-term digital environment. And um, while I recognize it's, you know, better than many things, I would wonder if it's easier to take from a digital environment on a C D and get it pulled into the new environment. I wonder if anybody's asked that. But the the ability to have something, you know, in the cloud or wherever is highly preferable, so.
I think is there hand up, Mo? Teddy has her hand up.
Oh, great. Okay, thanks.
Mo, you're on mute. Teddy?
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. I'm sorry, I I was on mute. Please feel free to answer the.
Mary Ann, we've had um most of our vital records from the seventeen hundreds through the eighteen hundreds restored, both on did on like a C D and also the um, the original copies have been um deacidified and and upgraded so that they're usable and they're now encapsulated into Mylar to keep the preservation going. Um, the state has come up with the um birth, both the birth and the marriage, birth and the death records, so that we can um go online now and issue certified copies of both of those. They do not have the funding, and I'm not sure when they will to upgrade the marriage um to that status. So this will help us stop constantly going to both our index cards and our um very fragile marriage records back to the nineteen hundreds. And they will be online. We can then um issue certified copies of those marriages.
Thank you, Teddy.
Does that answer your question?
It helps. Um, I do think getting them all to one place would be better, but hopefully all that.
I agree.
Yep.
I think I've waited ten years to see if this is gonna happen and and it isn't so far.
I totally get moving away from the index cards. I I understand dog-eared index cards.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Teddy.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, Artie Crocker from the CPC has his hand raised. Do you want to have him come in or?
Yes, he can come in.
Okay.
So while you're moving Artie in, I just want to say, I'm concerned that if some of these records are lost, does that mean those people aren't married anymore? Teddy?
Um, no.
Okay.
They, they would still be married.
Okay.
For better or for worse.
Artie, you raise your hand, come in, so you're, you are more than welcome to speak.
Yeah, no, that that was simply just to be here because Pete, Peter and I are both here representing basically the same interests for the most part as far as CPC and here, just in case, so.
So I.
I'm here, I'm here to observe mostly.
And Artie's our co- is co-chair for the committee.
Welcome, Artie.
Okay.
Thanks, Mo, appreciate it.
Being modest.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's me, that's me, me, Peter, I'm modest.
I mean, is, am I missing any other questions here? If not, let's proceed.
Okay, uh, F Y twenty-two zero four is Town Common Historic Redesign and Beautification. And this is the application for construction funds in the amount of one million three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars for reconstruction of the town common. We had funded the design funds in our prior cycle. Uh, since that the committee is in favor of funding the application and uh committee's pretty excited about the project, we'll say that. Any questions?
Uh, no, uh, no questions here. Anybody else else have a question? Uh, this is a very, very lovely project. It's going to greatly enhance the center of our downtown, which is the civic center of our community when it's complete, so that we're anxiously looking towards this one. Um, go ahead, Peter.
F Y twenty-two oh five is Fisher Street Trailhead Needham, and it's it's the, for the Needham Rail Trail. Um, this is an application for construction funds in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Just as a side note, last year we funded fifteen thousand dollars for the design of the tra- of the uh, of the Fisher Street Trailhead. Um, that design was done in-house by uh our uh our DPW Town Engineers Office. And so the fifteen thousand dollars was returned, and this is a request uh for materials. So the designers have been done in-house. Labor is going to be supplied by our town of Needham, and the fifteen thousand dollars is for materials only. Um, again, committee seemed pretty excited about the project. Any questions?
Are there any questions? You're on a roll, Peter.
Okay, F Y two, either that or I'm losing you completely. But F Y twenty-two zero six, that's resurfacing the synthetic track at the Fazio Field. Um, this is an application for construction funds in the amount of a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. And what this will do is do a spray resurfacing of the synthetic track at the Fazio, and it will extend the life of the track to what we understood to be its useful life, which is twenty to twenty-five years. Um, this was deferred last year, but uh, but we, uh, there's been, I would say, pretty much overwhelming support by the committee this year. Sense that the committee is in favor of funding the application. Um, we've seen pictures which tell a thousand words that show that there are certain parts of the track that are showing significant wear, and the track is getting significant use during the pandemic.
Thank you. Any questions on this item? Okay.
Alright, twenty-two oh seven is the McLeod Field renovation. Um, if you read the application, it may be a little confusing uh because the application requests forty-five thousand dollars for design work to address the uh four-foot drain pipe that runs under McLeod Field, which is apparently leaking and which causes periodic sinkholes in the field after heavy rains. But we subsequently learned that uh the proponents at, at the project actually involves the design of the reconstruction of the McLeod Field and adding certain amenities, but it also includes addressing the the four-foot drain pipe. And this is the first of, I would say, I think there are three applications which in our mind required us to think a little bit and dig in a little bit, make some decisions about what it is that we thought that CPC should be funding. Um, this um, uh, because it requests funding for the design of what to do with the, with the drain pipe. Um, we've done some research, met members of the committee, done some research by going to the Community Preservation Alliance database. Uh, members of the committee have also consulted with the Executive Director of the Community Preservation Alliance, and we've developed some working principles uh that we're applying to this application as well as to others that I'll get to in a few minutes. And uh, the sense of the committee is that CPC funds should not be used to fund subsurface or infrastructure projects that concern water, sewer, drains, culverts, catch basins, and the like. And the sense of the committee is that CPC funds should not be used to fund repairs and alterations to so-called uh inlets to open a recreational space. And I think to put a finer point on that, that really is kind of covered inlets, if you will, because I think that we have in the past funded uh cleanup of it, open inlets. Uh, but for the most part, as an example, if you look at what we did with our Rosemary uh pond, none of the inlet work was paid for through CPC, so none of it. But what, what CPC did pay for was the dredging of of um, of the pond. So with respect to this McLeod Field request, um, the sense of the committee is that we wouldn't be funding the design work or the construction work with respect to the, the, the pipe that happens to run underneath the field. Uh, but and that the estimated design work uh from the proponents is approximately three thousand dollars. So that would be not, that we would not be funding that. Um, certain members of the committee uh had some additional questions about the design itself. Uh, so mostly focused around the fact that it, this was redesigned and rebuilt as part of the Field of Dreams project in two thousand and eight. So we, we need to dig in just a little bit more, find out a little bit more about the design and then the need for the design and the rebuild. But we're still in the midst of the process. We have our public hearing on the seventeenth, and we'll have some discussions after that. I would say, though, with respect to app, with respect to all of the projects that are in front of us, this is the one where we have some just remaining uh questions. Um, and, but we feel pretty confident to have everything in front of us uh other than information based on our consultation and our public hearing to make a decision on the others. Any questions?
I have a question on the infrastructure issues. Are we looking at a means of covering those if they're not eligible by CPC? And whether or not they are, does that affect the decision of the committee on the portions of the requests that are deemed fundable?
Kate has her hand.
You see?
So, Mr. Chair, um, Dave Davidson, I will have a recommendation for funding sources for those projects that move forward uh that have uh, that the CPC is requesting a um non-CPC funding source, and we believe we can achieve those.
So that means that those requests are realistic if the CPC wants to approve them?
With respect, with respect to McLeod, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Any other questions? Uh, Matt Barelli?
Sure, and that was my question. I ju- I'm just trying to get the number straight, because to me, this is a critical field and, you know, strongly support the design of it. I know Parking Rec does as well, but it looks like the forty-five thousand uh does not include the design of what's called the infrastructure, the pipe. And that was another, what, three thousand that maybe the town would have to or pick up, or that wouldn't be in that number. Is that how the numbers work? The forty-five thousand doesn't include, it looks through the memo, the um, so the town be responsible for about three thousand, roughly?
I I think that that's generally, I think that's right. I was a little, I, that's actually one of my questions, but I think we should hold on to the idea that there's a three thousand dollar number that the fund would, that the town would have to fund. Whether it means that CPC is funding forty-two thousand dollars or funding forty-five thousand dollars, I'm not certain as I sit here today, only because I saw a bid that that had the number at a total cost of forty-nine thousand dollars, so I'm a little confused about that. But three thousand is the number that's not going to be funded.
Okay, great. And then my my second question was as far as, and I think you made a differentiation with uh Rosemary and the inlets, but when you funded, let's call Memorial, not drainage, can you differentiate that as far as moving forward in drainage and inlets and outlets and how, how the committee is going to look at those type of projects?
Um, did Kara's have her hand up, or was, is she gonna, she may be able to bail me out a little bit on this, so let's, let's.
So I think the main difference between the Memorial Park project and this is that the Memorial Park project drainage work was specifically addressing drainage that collected on the field. This particular project deals with a drainage pipe that goes under the field, but collects drainage from Dedham Avenue. Um, so the infrastructure runs through the field, but it's not necessarily absorbing um stormwater coming from the field.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Thank you for that, that cares.
Peter, do you have anything further to add?
No.
On this one? Any other questions before uh we move on? Go ahead.
Alright. I, I, I won't, I won't belabor it, but I guess I just hope we're if you've come to agreement on how to divvy this between the the CPC and and general town revenue, it's fine with me. Um, I guess it's all town money. We're trying to do the right thing and I uh it may in some cases be difficult to tell the difference between um I can see with it, you would not want to be paying for the town's general plumbing that happens to be under a playing field. But drainage, as Kara's has said, like with relation to the, to the um to Memorial Park, drainage is really a necessary element of all of these playing fields that, you know, would, that have thousands of people using them, and we've got to really maintain them. So as long as there's some flexibility uh in in how you do this, it's fine with me. Um, but I just wanted to encourage flexibility. Thank you.
Artie Crocker?
Peter, 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 may I? I just wanted the, I wanted to chime in. So how we, how we started to look at this is once we started to realize what was going on as far as drainage, and that seemed really not to sit on, sit in our purview. Um, but then talking to Ed, and in fact, this really should have been worded as a field design project request. We started to kind of talk about at least a number of, so I started to banter around as far as what, what do we normally spend on design of a playing field? And the fact remains is forty-five thousand dollars is not unusual to spend for a redesign of a playing field or a design, redesign of a playing field, which this, this certainly fits into that category. So the fact that we saw a price tag coming in at forty-nine thousand dollars um from one of the engine, one of the design firms, and then we saw a request of us coming to us is forty-five thousand dollars. I I think once we started to separate the fact that what it really, what this request really is, it started to, the questions started to get a little more answered. As Peter said, we're, you know, we're still making sure a few things, finding out a few things. Um, may, you know, for one of them being is, this, this has to be worded a certain way. Is it simply not worded uh correctly at this point? I I think everyone would be in agreement with that. So that's where we lie. correctly at this point. I think everyone would be in agreement with that. So that's where we lie right now. Thank you.
And actually, I just want to add that, you know, this is a good exercise because I welcome the input of both both Matt and Dan on how to kind of frame the issue and, you know, what the distinctions are. So we're we're there. You can make arguments because the language of the statute is pretty broad and pretty flexible. You can make arguments that this that all these projects would fit within that. We didn't find a lot of support for it in the database. And we were kind of we we were, let's say, strongly discouraged from those straightforward infrastructure like projects for funding those from the the Community Preservation Alliance. But all that being said, I under I understand that the project itself is going to, if the project itself involves drainage, obviously, that's a CPC funded element.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yes, and not not to belabor this because be glaberate because I think that there is a way to get funding and the flexibility is terrific. But, you know, from a construction point of view, if you put something in and you you have to move, let's say, a sewer line or you have to do something because that's what's in the ground, where is that fine line, I guess, is the question. I know that's what you're dealing with right now, but what does it is a gas line going through and you have to reroute it or sewer or you hit into something else and you just have to deal with it. I'm I'm trying to figure that out and tonight's not the time to figure that out because it's going to take a lot longer than that. But the fact of the matter is if the town can contribute and find a way through this and the field can get done, I think that's a discussion, you know, moving forward that will be here. So yeah, thank you for your work on this.
All right.
Matthews points out, it's all public money in the end, so.
He Peter, Mr. Mr. Chairman, I leave just one final word on this and that is, I think, I believe I believe most people, if they would ever see this field and know the history of this field and what's happened, know that we have to do something. So I know Matt that you had said, you know, if we can find a way, if I think it's we have to find a way. It's at that point, I can't imagine us not not taking care of it when it's such a when it's going to be such a central role of any conversation right now as far as finding funding. So I can't imagine it not happening, which means we truly have to find a way if at all possible.
Completely agree. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Peter, the floor is back to you.
FY twenty two zero eight, Trail Identification Professional Design Services. This is an application for design funds in the amount of six thousand dollars for trail system of identification signage for the trailheads, information kiosks and directional signage at our various town owned open space sites. So it's a uniform, it's it's to develop a uniform signage system that will act as what we call blazes on on trails and develop signs. The kiosks and perhaps even be able to put our our trails on something similar to in all trails online system, which helps for those of us who occasionally get lost on the trail. So it's pretty cool. So it sends the committee's favorable funding the application.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Are we going to sell a little birdhouses that currently mark the trail on eBay or what's going to happen to those?
Don't know.
Okay. Go ahead, Peter. I'm sorry.
FY twenty two zero nine, this is the Walker Pond Improvement. This is an application for one hundred and twenty five thousand dollars for the installation, and I'll describe it because it's such a it's similar to our prior discussion concerning McLeod Field. Three six foot diameter drainage manholes, the installation of a tree installation system, which is kind of an elaborate catch basin with a tree in the middle of it. Installation of wildflowers, tall grass, tree mixes and educational information to address water inputs to the Walker Pond. There's a phase two to this, which is actually the cleanup of the Walker Pond. This was also one of those projects where the committee felt that it shouldn't that CPC funds should not be used to to fund this, what we viewed as an infrastructure project concerning water inlets and catch basins and the like. But we did look favorably on certain aspects of phase two of the proposed project, which is actually the removal of the invasive species from the pond. Questions or comments?
I would like to find some answers to the question about the infrastructure portion, which my understanding is is a relatively small portion of the total project cost on this.
That's correct.
So it's been discussion about how we would deal with that issue?
We've identified a funding source for the portion that's not CPC. But I we believe it's an important project.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Any questions or comments? Matt and then Dan.
Sure. Just to reiterate, and I remember I think it was four years when I was chair, this came to us and, you know, it's not only I know there's a neighborhood association around and the town owns the majority of it, but it's something where I've fished on that pond or brought a canoe on that pond. So it is a real public use and I'm glad to hear that we can get funding for that to help with this remediation, whether it's CPC, I think it's very similar to our prior conversation or using the town funds for this. I just had a question when I looked at the memorandum as far as it said, like pamphlets are agreed, but how about there's like wildflowers and the other plantings was would that be covered by CPC or is that?
I Matt, I I assume that it would be. We kind of, those were small dollar amounts and we gave it kind of the shrug of the shoulder and said we would sure, we would. There are some things within this request that we would fund. And so the answer, you know, the answer is yes, but that that the big number has to do with the with the catch basins and the and the 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 tree well, if you will.
Okay. And that's something again that Kate, it sounds like we can find a funding source for. Where we have identified. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Keep going, Peter.
All right, good. FY twenty two ten is the town reservoir sediment removal. And this one kind of fits a little more neatly into what our philosophy was that we were trying to develop because this is an application for two hundred and sixty two thousand dollars for the design work to determine the best way to address the sediment removal from town reservoir of this total amount, one hundred and seventy five thousand dollars is to be used to remove the settlement for to evaluate and develop a design, excuse me, for bidding contractor services to remove the settlement. Eighty seven thousand dollars is to be used to evaluate and design the cleanup of the inlets to the reservoir and it goes those inlets are going up to the top of Birds Hill. So at we we that's where we took the sense of, look, we're not going to be funding and now, you know, the analysis of what to do with catch basins extending well beyond the water's edge. But we would be inclined to fund the design funds to evaluate and develop removal of the sediment from the from the town reservoir. So of the two hundred and sixty two thousand dollars, the sense of the committee was we would fund one hundred and seventy five thousand dollars of.
Thank you. Any comments or questions on this side? I'll keep going, Peter.
All right, the last one, and those those are all the applications. The last one would be a subject matter for our finance article, which is sometimes passed by unanimous consent. And if it's not, it's there's one or two questions and and people try to hang on to the relatively opaque presentation of what how the money flows in CPC. But this in in the context of the finance article, we would be proposing that the contribution, the the funds allocated and set aside in the community housing restricted funds reserve account be increased from eleven percent to twenty two percent. It would be a decision that we would be making annually. And it comes as a result of us doing a historic analysis of all the projects that CPC has funded and over the years, and we've determined that the open space and recreation has accounted for fifty nine percent of all appropriations. Historic has accounted for thirty seven percent and community housing has accounted for four percent. So two notes within that, one is the appropriations when we put together the chart didn't include what's actually in the reserve accounts. That's number one. And number two, the appropriations are weighted because towards the bonded projects, because the appropriation goes for the full amount of the debt. So that's why, no, I would stare at that and say, I don't understand why the number is not ten percent. It has to be ten percent, but not when part of it's in a savings account and the and we're getting weighted expenditures going all the way forward a decade or more. But the fact of the matter is that appropriations have been weighted very heavily towards historic preservation, open space and recreation. And in order to assist us in terms of planning and address issues about what happens when applications come to us and how how can we look at things in terms of what we want to do and what our priorities are? We thought it was appropriate to, at least for this funding cycle and perhaps for some additional funding cycles going forward. But like I said, it's going to be a year by year request to increase that amount from eleven percent to twenty two percent. And to give you a ballpark figure, currently in that reserve account, there's roughly two point five million dollars in the community housing reserve account. And we appropriate at eleven percent, we appropriate roughly three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year into that account. And so this would double it. We would we would move it up to seven hundred thousand dollars this year and whatever year going forward, it's approved. Sense of the committee is that we're in favor of it. We have with it, we had a working group that put this together. And there was a pretty nice PowerPoint presentation that's going to be presented at our public hearing on March seventeenth. But I don't want to belabor the issue tonight by showing it to you, but questions regarding that.
Just this is also subject to an up down voted town meeting, right? It does not get the ability to be amended. So this would be an up down or is it amendable?
That's interesting question. Don't know the answer to that because it is the finance article.
Does anybody know the answer to that? Dave, do you know?
Any vote of of the expenditure of the appropriation of CPA funds requires the CPC recommendation. So effectively, if CPC is not recommending the a lower amount or a higher amount, town meeting can't change the amount. Town meeting can only, as was stated, do an up or down vote.
Okay, thank you very much.
And Mr. Chair?
Yes, please, David.
The the last point is, of course, that the state law requirement that at least ten percent of the funds be set aside for the three statutory purposes, that's community housing, open space and historic resources that for the town must do. And if we don't, there are consequences to the town if if it doesn't. And in fact, the board is aware and the CPC is aware that FY twenty, we had a shortfall as a result of receiving extra funds, which will be in an additional article that will be discussed later on in this evening's meeting.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Matt Borelli?
Yes, and I I want to commend the CPC for this aggressive move. We've talked a lot about housing over the past couple of years. And if we're gonna make some attempts to get an opportunity to either partner with the developer, I've worked in towns where the CPC has bought a parcel and then worked something out with the developer to develop affordable housing. You look in need of itself, you look at let's be creative Stephen Palmer campus, is there something there? Is there something that if the town were to acquire parts in the future that we could put housing there? I think there there are opportunities and of course money dictates and the fact that we can have some money grow, and that's quite a substantial amount per year, I think is is a good trajectory and a good idea. So I'm all for it.
I would also note that we have a housing trust that's now in place and is established to track record of providing housing assistance and that is a good mechanism going forward as well for these funds when they develop into a substantial sum. Any other questions or comments? Mary Ann Cooley and then Dan Matthews.
I just wanted to second Matt's thought. When I saw this proposed to us, I was very excited. I think it's a a smart move and and a good investment for the town to be planning in this direction.
Quite agree. Dan Matthews?
Yeah, and I'll try not to take more than a couple of minutes, but because the people that are watching this are mostly the usual suspects that have heard this before, but it's a good time to because there may be some contention at town meeting and if and there's a question about if town meeting doesn't vote this, there'll be a technical correction that will be needed to be approved by the CPC or whatever. But it's really the principle of the thing, which is to make the twenty percent commitment. I think it makes a lot of sense, but we do need, I think, just to put it in context, it is not going to solve all of a lot of issues that we're working on. A major priority, I I think that from my perspective here is the Housing Authority, which is a separate agency within the, you know, effectively a state agency in the town, but owns three hundred units of affordable housing in town and additional land that could be used. But because of the withdrawal of the federal government for most funding from this really decades ago, they have needs for capital renovation, code compliance and and opportunities to add additional units. The the total ballpark figure is about a hundred million dollars worth of work. Even this commitment is not going to bring us up to that level. We're in the hundreds of thousands instead of the millions or tens of millions, but it still makes sense in the total context. Because having this fund, these funds, one, we have identified that there's a large range of affordable housing issues in town. And 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 one that really is one of the most obvious areas to work on if we can is to is to do the renovation and do the code compliance and add the additional units that on the Housing Authority properties. That isn't the only issue, but it's one of the ones that's really obvious if we can. Having additional funds here will provide seed money from to help the Housing Authority when they're ready to do so. Negotiate and or work or leverage their way through the very difficult process that they're going to have to follow in order to do this work, which is very large for a scale and an agency of their scale. I think there's at least some hope that the federal government may be returning to its role here, had occasion to attend a Newton, combined Newton and Waltham Chamber of Commerce meeting with Congresswoman Catherine Clark from who represents Waltham and some areas north of Newton, who said we need to recognize that public housing is infrastructure. And when we talk about maintaining infrastructure and improving it, public housing, as well as the pipes and the drains and the roads and the bridges should be in the mix. We've got a we've got a big deficit here to to address. It's not going to be solved with town money, but if the town is ready, well enabled to contribute its share when the time comes, we'll have a lot better chance of making progress. So thank you. Thank you, Peter, and to the committee.
Anyone else before we let Peter and Artie?
Oh, I just want to add that we as part of the public hearing and the presentation, you know, these these questions will come up on town meeting about whether or not that what's, you know, show me the need. We're talking about it in an abstract way. We we the presentation that we put together kind of gets pretty granular because they the the working group spent some time with both the Needham Housing Authority as well as 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 well as representatives of the Affordable Housing Trust. So and I think Karen Sonnenberg met with them, maybe Katie King, I don't know, but I know that Karen was involved. And so we're going to be actually showing what other towns have been using their CPC funds for. I know in this town, we may have a really high priority to use it to leverage the renovation in addition to affordable units through our low income units through Needham Housing Authority. But other towns have used it for all sorts of other kinds of housing opportunities. So I think in fairness to all, we kind of, we're going to present all of that because it's it gets, it's going to get everybody pretty excited about what we can do if we can increase the funding and what the possibilities are that are out there.
Peter, thank you so much for the clarity of your presentation and your leadership of this committee.
You're you're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for giving me that up.
Thank you.
And thank you all for carrying us through the pandemic. I really mean that sincerely, especially to our senior managers, especially to them. Okay, thank you.
We all join you in thanking our senior managers.
Mr. Chair, could I point out that I was just reading over the minutes that the last meeting that the board met in in person, I believe the CPC reps were on the phone. It was very, very difficult period.
I I yeah, I went back and looked at my presentation as well. And it was just about a year ago that I was last in the Boston Garden, by the way.
Wow.
Yeah.
And thank you also, Artie, for your work in this.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Thanks, everyone. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Karis doesn't get, he has to stay, but thank you. Stay because we have a very important item on the next agenda item. So Kate, I'm going to give over the So Kate, I'm going to give over the appointment of the Director of Public Works to you. And I understand that there may be others who may want to join in.
I think we have some guests coming, so we're going to wait one minute so Sandy can help move them all over.
I think we're all going to need to expand our screens to.
Don't worry, Mr. Chair, they won't be speaking.
No, no, I'm talking about the, the getting everybody in on the screen.
Including the cat.
Cool.
We like to have cats.
Absolutely.
Just give it one more minute here. Nice job, Sandy.
Everybody keeps getting smaller and smaller.
So, Mr. Chair, while they're still coming, I see Teddy Eaton, Steve Popper, Stacy Mulroy, our prior DPW Director Rick Merson, Ed Olson, Hank Haff, Michelle Valencourt, Greg Smith, Tony Delgazo, Barry Dulong, Cecilia Simczak, Bob Lewis. That's who we have here. And, Mr. Chair, we wanted to give Charis the impression that we were in the Select Board chambers as in old days and, and the room would be packed and people would be standing in the back. So we all remember what that's like and we hope that we'll get to go back to it. But it gives me great pleasure to have this item here. So Charis Lustig, as you know, has worked in the Department of Public Works. She may not know that she's been there for 16 years. It doesn't seem possible. She's had increasingly responsible roles. I didn't mention Catherine Copley. I'm sorry about that, Catherine. Increasingly responsible roles. She started actually as an intern. She worked in our office for Sandy and IR and then also in the Department of Public Works. She, she in fact began our Zerescap Garden project as an intern in college. She served then four years under Chip Laffey as the Administrative Analyst in Building Maintenance. And then she took the role of Supervisor of Administration in DPW in 2012. What many may not know is that Charis was Acting Director of Public Facilities, which is now Director of Building Maintenance. For almost a year and a half, she stepped up and did that role. And then she came back over to DPW Administration in a newly created role, which was a Director of Finance and Administration for Public Services, which was for all of the units in the PISAP building. Charis has also been the interim Director of Public Works, as you know, since October of 2020. With all that, you can tell that Charis has a breadth of knowledge of, of the working of the DPW, particularly having really ground up information in building maintenance. She, I think we would all credit Charis for formalizing and professionalizing and bringing together the budget for the Department of Public Works, which from an operating budget is second only to the schools and capital is significantly higher, higher than anybody else. She's also worked cooperatively with everybody on this Zoom to really embrace technology to increase the efficiency of the Department of Public Works. Having talked to everybody here and working with Charis as interim director for the last six months, I, I believe, Mr. Chair, that there's no better candidate that we have to serve as Director of Public Works, and I wholeheartedly endorse her for this role.
Thank you. That would bring us to a motion after which we can comment. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Bullion.
I would move that the board vote to approve the appointment of Charis Lustig as Director of Public Works in accordance with Section 20, Paragraph C of the Town Charter.
Is there a second to Mr. Bullion's motion? Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing, oh, Mr. Matthew and then Mr. Borelli.
The only thing that surprised me in this whole thing is when you said 16 years. It does not seem like that long, but Charis has been great at every single charge and responsibility she's had. She's done great work for the department. It is terrific to have her running it. And I want to just say thank you and congratulations and all the best.
Thank you, Dan. Matt Borelli, then John, and then Mary Ann.
Sure, Charis, I want to congratulate you and looking at this team here, I, I want to thank everybody on this Zoom call and under your leadership during COVID. DPW is all encompassing, as you know, and so many aspects of our town revolve around DPW and their work. And it, it's great to see you're going to be at the helm in the future and continue that. And I remember our interactions on the Finance Committee, we talk about budgeting and bringing things up to date and the discussions we've had and streamlining and all those, I remember were priorities. And I remember you moving through to public facilities and it's good career track. And starting as an intern sounds pretty familiar to me for another director. So best of luck and it's terrific to see all these faces. It does remind me of being back in Town Hall, which we will be back in Town Hall. So congratulations, Charis.
John?
Charis, congratulations. And, you know, this is a huge step forward for, you know, for you, for the town. I, I just think that, you know, you've done great. We've known you for a long time and we're looking for great things from you. And it's very exciting to see all the familiar faces, albeit very little on this screen. But it's, this is a testament to the work that you've done and congratulations.
Thank you, John. Mary Ann?
I want to say thank you to everybody who's, who's joined us, but a particular thank you to Charis. And I remember those days, not when you were an intern, but in the first role back with Chip Laffey. And I can remember even back then when somebody would say, well, Kara says, the answer is the whole school committee at the time would go, oh, okay, that's what we're doing then. All right. And so now you're following Rick and it's always been when Rick says, we're saying, okay, that's what we're doing. And you are exactly the same way. So I thank you for being a definitive voice for us and a voice that we know we can trust and of reason and that does such fabulous service for the town. And I'm excited.
And Charis, it's hard to add to that, but you represent a wonderful tradition of team playing and leadership and professional competence that does us all proud. And I kind of got that sense when I met you by accident on the Martha's Vineyard ferry when you and I were both coming back from bike trips. And I said, this is a person who's going places on two wheels then, but now full bore. So thank you very much. And again, I'd like to thank Rick Merson for joining us here for this wonderful event. And that brings us to the motion, I think. We have to vote on it, otherwise it's pointless. So the motion's been made and seconded. Then we come to the vote. Mr. Bullion?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Borelli?
Yes.
And last but not least, before the chair, Mary Ann Cooley.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. It's unanimous, Charis. Welcome aboard.
Mr. Chair, perhaps Charis has something she'd like to say?
Please.
Um, so I just want to thank the board for this opportunity. I've really enjoyed the last few months in this role in the interim position. And I'm very excited to be continuing the work that, that I've started. I grew up down the street. I'm not sure how many of you know from the Public Works Department, about five houses down Dedham Avenue. And I can certainly tell you that growing up there, I never thought that I would end up leading this organization. But I'm very proud to be able to take on this leadership role. I wanted to thank the staff, many of who are here, but many of who are not in the Public Works Department, who help this department function every day. I would not be able to do what I've been able to do without their support through this whole process. Transitioning from a 40-year veteran like Rick is not easy normally. And it's certainly not easy under these particular circumstances. And that staff has worked to make sure that we're able to step up and deliver services to the residents of Needham every day. You know, I've been able to view the department in a very different way in the past few months and seeing it really from an operations eye. And I've been really impressed just going out in the field and seeing the leadership that our staff has, the teamwork that they exhibit, and it makes me feel really fortunate to take this role on because I'm not just taking a leadership role on, I'm taking it on in an organization where there's just a really thriving culture of teamwork and working with professionals who really care about their jobs. So I really look forward to working together with everyone here and with this organization for the upcoming weeks, months and years. So I just want to thank you.
Thank you, Charis. And I want you to know that I did manage to get a screenshot. So even though we can't step out in the hall as we would normally do, although we can give you a rain check, you will have a picture of this event. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you all for coming.
Thanks all.
Thanks, everyone.
Okay, Kate.
Okay, it'd be great if you all disconnected. We need you. We need more meetings with babies and cats. Maybe if somebody will have a dog next time, that'd be really.
Charis, you're welcome to stay and bathe in the lime light.
So, Mr. Chair, the next item on our agenda is to close the special town meeting warrant. We will be back to talk to you at your next meeting about the final changes from the CPC articles and the funding sources that are recommending, recommended after the hearing. And also the, the final zoning would be after the Planning Board's hearing, which is also coming up next week. And then as Mr. Jason mentioned earlier, we do, we, it is not in this version of the warrant, but we do need to add another article for the Community Preservation Committee to true up the accounts for FY 21 because we got an additional amount from the state. So it's $23,830 in total that would be transferred from CPA free cash. So we would ask the board to close the warrant, subject to the normal technical corrections to be made by the town manager, bond council and town council. And we will be back with a little bit of reformatting of some of the articles and the addition of this new CPC article at your meeting on the 23rd, right after which the, the warrant would be going to print.
Thank you very much, Kate. Do you have a motion, John?
Yes, I would move that we close the special town meeting warrant, subject to technical corrections.
And motion's been made and seconded. I would just note for the public that this is an unusual year in that the special town meeting will precede the annual town meeting, which is the first Monday in May. That, this is due to the pandemic and all of the other things that we're facing. So please be aware if you're planning to come to town meeting. The motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? That brings us to the vote. Mary Ann Cooley?
Aye.
Matt Borelli?
Yes.
Dan Matthews?
Aye.
And John Bullion?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Chair, just to let you know, we, we are putting together our plan of communicating with town meeting members in, in any number of fronts to explain the unusual situation and, you know, provide that well-advanced notice.
Thank you very much, Kate. And I, I have been notified, of course, that we have a standing item on our agenda, which is the Nwari Committee Report. And there's been a significant amount of work done and Mary Ann Cooley is going to report on that.
So, um, Nwari met last evening and we had a plan to discuss the town's diversity, equity and inclusion efforts through our hiring managers. So we were joined by Rachel Glisper and Alex, I'm blanking on Alex's last name right at the moment.
McNeil.
McNeil. And to talk about their work for the town and for the schools. And in fact, a lot of work that they're doing together as part of a partnership that they call Stronger Together. There are a couple of pieces of work that I think the board would find particularly interesting. They mentioned that they have a collaboration going for the summer with Metco, where they're particularly focused on helping Metco students to gain employment, summer employment in Needham and have thought about the issues and potential barriers to permitting those students to do it. So they would have a T pass to be able to get out here, be able to be reimbursed for things like getting their lifeguard certification and areas like that. So I think that is a terrific partnership. The schools have hired some 37 staff of color over the last couple of years. But it's still been a challenging period of time where they've also lost staff of color. So, you know, it's, it's a, a big thing and they're trying to figure out how to retain increasing numbers at a time when other districts are also interested in some of those same staff. So setting up all the systems so that they can work well and those folks feel well supported is important. The town is really trying to think and the schools about how they communicate open positions out. One of the comments that was made by Alex as she talked about the schools is that often when the schools post openings, there are a number of people who are always watching Needham openings very carefully, who pounce and get resumes in. They're actually taking time to keep postings open longer to cast a wider net, to be sure that the pool is the best pool that it can be with a riot of individuals in it. So they're, they're very focused on what approaches can they do so that we can start to build a workforce that looks more like our students at least. So making that happen. We spent, um, the last thing that I'm thinking about was there was also discussion about how can teachers, just like we had portrait of Needham graduate, what would it look like to be a portrait of a Needham teacher and to think about developing our teachers? And one of the questions that Nwari asked, you know, and, and Rachel was thinking about is how do you, what's the portrait of a Needham worker? You know, thinking about that approach across the continuum. Nwari spent the second half of their meeting working with Lisa Smith McQueeney again on the guiding principles and the intentional practices. And I am pleased to report that in fact, the committee developed a draft of those practices and completed that work last evening. We are, now that we finalized that draft, we did not vote it last night. We were going to give people a chance to just take a breath and take a look at it. And again, at our next meeting on the 22nd, I think is the day. And expect to vote it that night. And at that point, we would bring it as a resolution to go to town meeting as well and back to this board for final approval of those and support of those. But we're very excited that we reached that point out with agreement from the committee.
Thank you, Mary Ann. You and Matt have put a lot of work into this committee and it shows. So thank you very much. Matt, do you want to say something?
Sure. And thank you, Mary Ann. I, I just would add, when I look at these conversations or part of these conversations, it really occurs to me how proactive as a town we've been. And I know Kate, especially you in the personnel world way back and we have people on the, on the committee who are in that role as well, Personnel Board. And, and when these things come to light, you know, because we're not always these day-to-day interactions with our HR and employees, it's terrific to hear how much they're actually doing. And a lot of the questions, how about this or how about that? It's like, oh yeah, we're, we're doing that. Not only are we doing this, we set up, we're purchasing software that's going to do X, Y and Z, which, you know, it's sort of a very proactive approach and it was great to hear questions and comments from the committee on other aspects. Have you thought of reaching out to certain colleges? And, and very open dialogue and a terrific kind of shining the light on, on what we truly do. So I think that's great. And again, the vision statement, usually don't like to wordsmith during meetings. It, it takes a while, but I think in this type of environment, that's when we get the work done and it has come together. So proud to report that we're in a good place on that. So thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Any other quick comments on the report by Mary Ann? I mean, this is an issue that's so important to all of us that we will never have the luxury of being complacent about it. And I think the work that you and Matt and the committee is doing will advance that, that goal of making this a welcoming community. It believed it was, but discovered it might not have been as welcoming as it thought it was. So thank you. Any other business to come before us? Mary Ann?
If I could bring another committee report for future school needs to the board. So Future School Needs met on Thursday, I think last week. I'm losing track of my days. And so I just wanted to do a very quick update. I had asked for some materials to be forwarded to the board as part of your mail packet so that you could see it. But, but I do want to give you a couple of the highlights of our conversation with our demographer, Jerry McKibben. So we would observe that the schools this year are down some 221 students. Okay, those are. Okay, those students are predominantly, didn't appear in kindergarten and first grade. We expect that certainly some number of them will be back next year. It will probably cause a little bit of an unusual situation. Many communities are expecting, for example, that students who didn't come in kindergarten this year are likely to come red-shirted in kindergarten next year, which will make an overly large kindergarten class and a relatively small first grade that precedes it. So we're going to see some, you know, kind of snakeiness occurring in the class numbers as a result of the pandemic is expected. The other thing is that because there was the decrease, it's actually going to take a couple of years till we're sort of back to the 29, 2019 level of population in the schools. We can, it doesn't buy us a lot more breathing time as we're looking at a building plan, you know, but it maybe buys us a couple more years of, of breathing time. I don't think the schools are necessarily breathing any easier, but there is a little bit of that that's going on. When you look at it across the period, you see a decrease at the elementary level that is of about 175 students that is almost matched across that same tenure period by an increase in population at the high school level. And in fact, the, the middle school stays a little bit down, but relatively constant. The K to five years sort of have declined through the period and are never as high as they were in 2019, expected based on population moving into town. The high school students, you know, 2019 is still a low point. And because the larger classes are growing up to the high school, it will continue to be more full. So that is sort of what's coming when you look at it at a macro picture. Couple of things. Jerry McKibben talked about the real estate market across the country at this moment in time. He talked about the fact that with the pandemic, that mobility, people moving out of houses to other locations or to downsize or that kind of thing really has not been happening. As a result, the quantity of properties on the market is almost at historic lows in many locations or, or definitely at a low point. But demand, people are looking to move out of a city or there's pent-up demand from the last year is significantly high, which is creating a lot of pressure upwards on prices at this moment in time. At the same time, there's still not a lot of people moving right now, which again, if our school numbers relied on inflow of people and families into town, that's not happening at the rate that it was, which again, helps to contribute to this kind of softening of some of the school numbers over the next couple of years until that situation gets back to a state of equilibrium. The other discussion that was interesting was with the census, where will the population be? And of course, a pandemic happened at the time of counting of the population. He had a few words to describe the state of the census that can't be said on Zoom. But, but what I will say is that in his words, he said he would be shocked if the census for the town was over 29,000 people. So we will all look forward to seeing what the output is.
John Bullion?
Hey, I wouldn't have said anything, but Mary Ann mentioned census. So I'm going to make a comment. I don't know whether or not my colleagues noticed what the state of New Hampshire has done is they are proposing not counting and not allowing college students who go to college in New Hampshire to vote. So, which would be a direct, indirect contradiction to the federal census, which counts college students at the place that they are as their domicile in the place that they go to college. So it's going to be interesting to see how that works out. Do I believe that that will ultimately lead to a court challenge? Of course it will. So stay tuned for that. Thank you.
We'll be here on baited breath turn. Any other questions or comments for Mary Ann? Any other committee reports that haven't been previously requested? The chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. And again, thank you, Sandy, for your coordinating the Zoom. And Kate, thank you so much.
So moved.
Dave, thanks. Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Matt Borelli?
Yes.
Dan Matthews?
Yes.
John Bullion?
Yes.
Mary Ann Cooley?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. The ayes have it. Thank you.